Welcome to the September 10, Thursday, City Council meeting. And we'll start with the flag salute. So if you would join me in standing and pledging to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. For which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Amy, if we could get the roll call.
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Present.
And Mayor Slowey.
And if you'd the video statement, please.
We are experiencing some technical difficulties tonight. So the meeting, it will be live on Metro Cable 14 through our YouTube channel. And it will also be webcast at citrusheights.net. And today's meeting will replay on Monday, September 14 at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14.
And Amy, could you go ahead and mute me too, even though I have it? I don't know if you have me up there. Thank you. All right. First item, approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Bruins move approval. Middleton seconded. Roll call. Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Yeah, I'm having trouble.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present. Or aye, I'm sorry. I was going backwards. All right. Comments by council members and regional board updates. Mr. Daniels, we'll start with you.
Okay. Well, I'm having all kinds of technical difficulties. I don't know if it's on my side or what, but so I'm just.
Yeah, you're frozen. So if you come back, we'll come back to you. Ms. Middleton.
This past week, we had a Sacramento Metro Cable Commission meeting where we went over our budget and whether or not we're going to continue with the commission as it stands. We'll have something to report later on in the year.
Thank you. Ms. Bruins.
I have nothing to report. Our PAL meeting will be next week, and so I'll report out on that at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels, are you back? Did you have anything to say?
He's muted, Jeff.
Okay. If you do, Brett, just wave or unmute yourself. Vice Mayor Miller.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Slowey. No meetings to report on the past couple of weeks. Did want to mention that the Sylvan Cemetery is hosting the 9/11 memorial service tomorrow morning at Sylvan Cemetery in Citrus Heights at 8:15 p.m. And they're planning on going forward with the ceremony about 30, 40 minutes at the gazebo. They say that folding chairs will be provided for those that want to sit, but there'll be no mandatory seating arrangements. And if you're concerned about your health and do not want to attend, they say they understand, and they're hoping that that won't be a problem. I think the biggest problem right now, besides the COVID virus, is the smoke. So I plan on going out there and observing 9/11 tomorrow morning.
Well, thank you. If you would represent the whole council, we would appreciate that.
Certainly.
Somebody else is able to go.
Others are welcome.
Right. Okay, from my end, I have no.
Mayor, real quick, I'm just having all kinds of technical problems, but nothing to report.
Thank you, Brett. All right, from my end, I have no regional board updates. I do want to just pass along that regarding West Nile virus, you know, amongst all the other things going on that is out there. So if you are spending times outdoors, make sure you seek the proper protection. If you have a neighbor who is not taking care of his pool, certainly feel free to call the local mosquito abatement district, and they can come out and put mosquito fish in and take care of the problem. So that will be it for that item. We have public comment. Amy, I believe you have one written comment, and then we'll take a peek to see if anybody's raising their hand out there.
Okay. So we have one public comment received from David Warren. He states, "It is self-evident that the city must find additional sources of revenue to prevent loss of staff, be unable to fill staffing vacancies, and to make municipal repairs. At the Chamber of Commerce Measure M Forum on September 1st, Councilmember Bruins, in her prepared statement in some and substance, stated that the city has poll results stating a majority of residents supported a sales tax increase. I and my neighbors have never received a poll question which asked whether or not we would support a 1% increase in sales and use tax for municipal services and repairs. If such a poll was taken, the city should publish the specific question asked and the total number of votes cast approving or rejecting the 1% increase in the sales and use tax. It is disingenuous to represent that poll results exist if it does not, which proves that a majority of residents support a sales tax increase if the specific question has never been asked. The city funds a polling delivered by Internet to residents. If the city council believes that a majority of the residents support Measure M, the proof can be obtained by the poll asking, 'Will you vote for a 1% sales tax increase to pay for police, city employees, and street repairs?'" Followed by publishing the results of that poll instead of asserting because residents want public services and municipal repairs, that the taxpayers will agree to a sales tax increase to pay for them. And that is the only written public comment that I have received.
Thank you, Mrs. Van. If you're watching, and you did not submit a written topic, and you would like to speak, if you would use the raise your hand function on the Zoom, we would be happy to let you speak. I only see two active participants outside of city staff. I don't see any hands up. So we will close the public comment at this time. Next item, Mrs. Van.
Next item is consent calendar items four, five, six, seven, and eight.
Ms. Bruins, do you have a statement to make? Jeannie?
Yeah, I was making it with my muted, my mic muted. So I am going to recuse myself from items seven and eight due to a conflict of interest.
Okay.
But I will move consent with the understanding I will not be voting on those two items.
Okay. So you're moving four, five, six, and seven with the understanding that your vote will only be on four, five, six, and you will technically be abstaining on seven and eight?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote, Mrs. Van.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
All right, regular calendar items.
The next item under regular calendar is item nine. The subject is Sacramento Regional Radio Communication System Agreement. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a licensing agreement with the Sacramento Regional Radio Communication System.
Chief Lawrence.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dan Stockbridge.
Sorry.
And I am the communications supervisor with the Citrus Heights Police Department. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening, along with my partners Nikki Bell and Chella Contra, seeking adoption of a resolution to renew our contract with the Sacramento Regional Radio Communication System, or SRRCS. SRRCS is maintained and operated by the County of Sacramento, but allows any public safety governmental agency within the coverage area to apply for membership in this multi-agency conglomerate. SRRCS maintains a vast network of radio communications, equipment that provides two-way voice radio communications, and agency interoperability. They maintain the core infrastructure of multiple radio towers and the technological backbone upon which all radio communication in the region runs. SRRCS is the sole source provider for radio communications in the region and the backbone for all radio communications for the Citrus Heights Police Department. The original tenure agreement expired on July 1st of 2020, with an extension approved until October 1st of 2020. If approved, the proposed licensing agreement will carry the city to July 1st of 2030. The SRRCS supports regional interoperability for public safety and public service partnerships throughout Sacramento County. This renewal will allow the Citrus Heights Police Department to maintain radio communications. The City of Citrus Heights initially joined SRRCS in 2006 with an initial buy-in cost of $116,194, in addition to prorated operational fees. This contract realized the efforts of the Citrus Heights community to share in not only their own police department, but also their own 911 communication center. The city signed a tenure extension agreement in 2010. Each year, we have annual maintenance fees of $330 per radio, and the Citrus Heights Police Department currently has 215 radios in service with SRRCS. For fiscal year 2023-21, our fees will be $70,950. Now, over the course of the licensing agreement, there are planned increases in future fiscal years that have been included in the department's projected budget, as those listed on the slide before you. These increases absorb the costs of both required infrastructural improvements necessary for system sustainability and service by Motorola to SRRCS users. Alliance with SRRCS promotes cooperation amongst 28 user agencies and spreads large capital and ongoing operations costs across these agencies. CHPD makes up 1.5% of radios on the SRRCS backbone, and each participating agency is charged for their portion of the system they use. Should the city decide against renewal of this agreement, we would be required to build and maintain an entire radio system which would be cost prohibitive. CHPD benefits from the collaboration between agencies and not only shared costs, but also shared knowledge and experience. Our continued participation and influence as a member of SRRCS allows Citrus Heights Police Department to continue innovation and relevance in the region. The police department recommends the city council approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the renewal of our licensing agreement with the Sacramento Regional Radio Communication System. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate the presentation. Any council members have questions for Mr. Stockbridge?
I move approval of the resolution. As you pointed.
Bruins moves the motion. Miller seconds it. I was going to take a voice vote, but I guess we can't do that. So, Ms. Van, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Thanks again, Dan, for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 10. The subject is Amendment to the City's Card Room Ordinance Sunset Provision. The recommendation is to introduce, read by title only, and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code relating to card rooms. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Amy Van, City Clerk, and I'll be giving the presentation on this item. After the city incorporated in 1997, many of the county's codes were adopted until we could adopt our own amendments. And as it relates to the card room regulations, the council at the time created a subcommittee to make recommendations for appointments or for amendments. And one of the recommendations was to include a sunset provision which established when card rooms in the city would be prohibited. The sunset provision has been extended on several occasions, with the most recent extension to December 31 of 2020. So tonight, staff is recommending an amendment to the ordinance to delete the sunset provision. Consistent with state law, the city submitted the proposed amendments to the Bureau of Gambling Control, and they found that eliminating the sunset provision does not conflict with the Gambling Control Act. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Van. Any questions from the council?
I move approval.
Second.
Was that Daniels who did the second? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Daniels second, Bruins motion. Roll call, Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Thank you, Amy. Motion carries five zero. Next item.
The next item is regular calendar, item 11. The subject is Designation of Voting Delegate and Alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. This year, the annual conference will be held October 7th through 9th. And during the annual conference, they hold an annual business meeting, and it will be taking place on October 9th, Friday, at 11:00 a.m. during the annual business meeting. And the city must select a delegate to vote on the resolutions that they will discuss, and they can appoint up to two alternates, and they must be registered to attend the conference. And at this time, I believe Councilmember Bruins and Councilmember Middleton are the only council members registered to attend the conference at this time.
Okay. And the conference, while it would have been held in Long Beach this year, it will be done via Zoom, so there will be no travel. Ms. Bruins, Mrs. Middleton, either one of you want to volunteer to be the primary and the other one to be the secondary? Although, Jeannie, I think you've done it before, so it would be.
I know, of course, you did last year, but of course, I essentially emailed, right, for the meeting. Would you mind being the first place again this year, and I'll back you up?
Oh, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
All right. I will move Councilmember Middleton be the primary, and Councilmember Bruins be the secondary.
Second.
I heard Vice Mayor Miller be the second, so roll.
I thought Brett beat me.
Okay, you can both have it. You can have the tie.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Thank you, ladies, for kind of volunteering. Department reports.
So our next item, department report, number 12. The subject is Review and Give Direction on Proposed Resolutions to be Presented at the League of California Cities Annual Conference Business Meeting. And I believe Catherine Cooley will be providing an overview.
Welcome, Catherine.
Hello, thank you. Welcome, Mayor, council members. I'm going to share my screen real quick here. The purpose of this presentation is for the council to have an opportunity to give its voting delegate, Councilmember Middleton, direction on the cities or the council members' opinions on the conference resolution that will be coming before the voting delegates at the League of California Cities Conference in October. This isn't an action item, rather, it's just an opportunity for discussion. The package this year is pretty simple. There's only one item for consideration tonight, and that is the league is requesting a call to amend the Communications Decency Act of 1996. This was brought forth by a variety of cities. One of the cities would be the city of Roseville. And the reason this is being called for is because cities would like to request that social media companies, or make it a requirement, that social media companies remove materials that promote criminal activities on their sites. Right now, social media companies are immune from any civil liability for criminal activities that are promoted on their sites. This is likely a case of the law having not really caught up with how social media is now used. It's not just a site to post content, rather, it's an opportunity for people to connect with others and share information. And so the league is requesting that being immune from civil liability for these companies would be conditioned on the following requirements, namely that platforms establish a program to identify and take down content, that they would provide information to law enforcement, and that if the platform fails to do either of these two items, that they would not be immune from state and local laws and their civil liability and whatever criminal conduct resulted from posts. And so with that, I will open this item up for discussion. If you have any questions, I'm available, but this would be the council's opportunity to give any direction and opinions to Councilmember Middleton.
I would certainly support it.
I would support it, too. I just have a question for our legal counsel. Do we, does there need to be a provision for definition of criminal activity, or does it reference the code?
That's something that they'll handle at that point. It doesn't reference the code at this point that I'm aware of, but I think there'll be more discussion once you get to the actual conference about that.
Okay. Good enough. Yeah, we'll do that.
Any other comments?
No, it's one I actually support, so.
Okay.
It's an easy one.
Brett, any comments, sir? Okay. The only additional, so Portia, I think you've kind of got some direction there.
Got it.
The only other thing I'll mention is the Rev. and Tax Policy Committee is actually meeting later this month, and it is to, it's in reference to, and I haven't seen the agenda, but it talks about Prop. 19. I'll be honest with you, there's so many doggone initiatives on there, I forget which one is Prop. 19. But the point of it is bringing it forward at the convention to see if the league wants to support or oppose. Again, I haven't, I think that our meeting's the 29th, so what I can do, as long as nobody responds, I can informationally mail, email the council after our meeting on the 29th, just as to what took place in the Revenue and Tax Policy Committee, and if, and leave it at that. And I think we can trust Portia to make us proud. Does anybody know what 19 was off the top of their head?
It's the property tax transfers exemptions and revenue for wildfire agencies and counties amendment.
Ah, okay.
So it's something to do with transferring your tax assessments anywhere within the state to allow for a more expensive home with an upward adjustment.
Oh, you're looking it up. Google's a wonderful thing, isn't it?
I sit here on the computer, I just don't have anything better to do.
No, it's good, because I'm glad you clarified that. Thank you. So again, I'll give you a recap of the meeting after the 29th, because I don't think we'll be having a meeting before the convention. Okay. Is that okay if I just give them a recap? Mr. Ryan?
Correct. You can provide that information, just like you would a report. You'll just need to be careful that nobody responds, there's any kind of group messaging. So I'd say if you could do like a blind copy to the members, that would be the best way so they can't respond and create a follow-up conversation.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Next item, Amy.
Next item is city manager items.
Yes, council, good evening. I do have just a couple of updates for you. First of all, just on COVID, we haven't provided update in a while. So just briefly, as you know, the state and the governor has changed kind of the system to a tiered system. You know, Sac County is currently in the lowest tier, which is Tier 1, purple, which lowest meaning with the most widespread cases out of the tiers or the categories. Sacramento County has reached almost 20,000 confirmed cases with a little under 350 deaths. Citrus Heights has had 801, and our death rate has risen to 15. So, you know, we continue to monitor, we're continuing to operate our city government as we have, with really no blips whatsoever, providing full service really in every category. So we'll continue to do that until the situation improves and we can move through the tiers as laid out by the state. I want to end on a good note, though. I mean, the city council's response in so many ways has been fantastic, but I specifically wanted to just report out on the Great Plates Program that you've put in place. We've really been able to help a lot of seniors in terms of getting them fed, and our local restaurant businesses as the avenue to do that. To date, and this program is administered entirely through the city staff, staff members, it's federal money. We've provided about 52,500 meals to date, which is about 3,700 meals a week we're providing, and we've been. and we've invested to date a little over $1.1 million into our local economy directly to those restaurants feeding those seniors. So the program, again, has been extended through October 9th, so we plan to keep participating as we think we are, we're doing some good out there. So I want to congratulate the council again on the decision to participate there. So that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Boyd, one quick follow-up question. If you don't know the answer, that's fine, you can get back to me. One of the restaurants that has been participating did reach out to me and said they had reached their limit. I didn't have a chance to get back to them. It was earlier today, whether that meant, and I don't know if we have a cap per participant or if it was because the program expired, but now it's going through the ninth. Does that make any sense?
I would need to know more. I can talk to you offline. I mean, everybody should, it could be a contract issue or, I'm not aware of any other limit that way, but I'll talk to you offline, I'll check right away.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions for City Manager Boyd?
Nope.
All right. The last item is items requested by council members, future agenda items. Just a reminder to the council, the, Amy, help me out here, is it the 28th?
September 24th.
24th. Okay, I was close, I was only four days off. We will not be having our second meeting this month. There is nothing for the agenda, and typically we take one meeting off during the summer. In this case, we've had stuff come up, so we are not going to be holding a council meeting the 2nd, the 4th, Thursday of this month, September 24th. We will see you back in October. Any items from other council members?
Nope.
All right. So in even, since we started a minute late, it was an even 30-minute council meeting tonight, so with that, I thank you all for being here, and I will adjourn tonight's council meeting September 10th. Thank you.
Right.